We should have just taken the Cross River Columbia.
Yeah, yeah.
Removed it and done the rest. Anyway, that's our commentary for the moment.
That's our grumbles to begin the discussion.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to have a wrap-up today. For the record, my name is Preeti Shridhar. I'm the Deputy Public Affairs Administrator for Renton. And it's really our pleasure to have Doug Levy with us. As you know, Doug Levy is our legislative consultant. And he's really the person who represents the city, you know, on the ground in Olympia. Just wanted to give you a little update on a few things that we changed this year. First of all, we reorganized the state, in fact, the entire intergovernmental relations function, including the state legislative function, so that these activities were now part of the mayor's office and the executive department. And as part of that, Doug Levy's contract and working was under direct, you know, the responsibility of Jay and myself. We also did something, you know, soon after we start, just before the start of the session, if you remember, you know, the city, the council adopts a legislative agenda, and we did that last year. But in the past, it's been, just in terms of text, a multiple-page document with small font and lot of text. And we were hearing from our legislators saying, you know, "We get it, but we want something short and sweet and simple." So without changing the context or any of it, we just created this one-pager which we called "At a Glance," and started using that pretty much prior to the beginning of session. And it was a useful document because it was this one page, everything up there in bullets. And as our legislators wanted more information, or data, or statistics, we would provide that to them. So those were the easy things that we did here with, at the city. But it was a whole different story going on in Olympia. On the one hand, the 2012 elections were conducted with newly-established legislative districts and boundary lines, pretty much from the redistricting commission efforts from 2011. For Renton, what that meant was, we had the return of the 33rd district. We used to have that serve Renton in the 1990s, and no more precincts in the 47th or 5th legislative district. So basically, this year, we had four districts rather than five. I'm gonna quote something that I saw in the Renton Reporter today, and I thought that was really aptly quoted. It said, "Veteran observers of life under the Capitol dome said in January that a divided legislature, a new governor, a court ordered to boost school funding, and a slow-recovering economy created a perfect storm for the impassioned compromise that we witnessed." So without doubt, this was one of the most interesting, different, you know, sessions that we had. There was a major shakeup in terms of the power structure in the Senate and the House. There was a new majority coalition of 23 Republicans and two moderate-to-conservative Democrats. Senator Rodney Tom from the 48th District, and Senator Tim Sheldon from the 35th District. And this led to a realignment of committee chairs and a shifting philosophy on budget and tax issues in particular. So unprecedented is a mild word to use for what we saw this session. Regular session, two extra session, 153 days, not to mention that we were all sitting saying, "Is the government going to shut down towards the end?" So there certainly was a lot of drama. But the good news is, despite all of this, we had some great accomplishments. And we do have some great successes to share with you today, and some disappointments, of course. And what we're gonna do today is, Doug's gonna walk through our priorities and share the accomplishments with you, and, you know, answer any questions. But before I turn it over to Doug, there were a few things that I wanted to mention and acknowledge. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge the mayor, all of your council members, Jay, our administrators, and key staff, who were just relentless in terms of their support, providing information, going to Olympia at, you know, within minutes' notice, to really champion our causes, speak to our legislators, and make sure that our priorities were always front and center. And so, you know, without that kind of collective effort of everyone jumping in together, we would not have had the successes we had today. The other thank you is to all our partners and our stakeholders, especially our major stakeholders. I mean, we're known to be this really very strong team effort, and in places like working together to define and work through our legislative priorities, it really shows its true colors. So, you know, Renton School District, Renton Chamber, Valley Medical, Renton Technical College, our hoteliers, so everyone kind of came together as needed for, you know, specific priorities. And this year, because we expanded some of our priorities to include, you know, broader-than-Renton efforts, such as the Central Sound Aerospace Training Center, we actually made a lot of new partners and had a lot of new organizations, agencies, and groups that we worked with. And once again, you know, their support was really critical to what we've been able to achieve. And now, it's my pleasure to turn over to Doug Levy, our outstanding state lobbyist, strategic, tireless, tenacious, and really made sure that, you know, he got the best deal for Renton, so.
All right. Well, thank you for that description and introduction.
Sure the kind words, Preeti. So I think we're gonna skip through a few pages of your packet where we list, just so you get a sense, the districts that represent all or a piece of Renton, the 11th, the 37th, the 41st, and the 33rd. We're really fortunate, we've got quite, quite a number of leaders within those districts, whether they're committee chairs, ranking members, in-house or senate leadership positions. You can look through, and really, just about all of them have some sort of place where they're either heading up a committee, or heading up a committee effort for a minority party. So there's a lot of ability for our folks to get in and affect the process, and I think that's helpful to you. And so I very much appreciate the kind words, but I think you don't do it without the kind of team effort that Preeti was describing, and frankly, the members who take the votes and are in good positions to help you. So if you go through here, you'll get to our basic premises, which we've had in place as a city for a number of years. We want flexibility. We don't want to have unfunded mandates foisted upon us. We want to maintain as much local control as we can. We've wanted to maintain basic services while the state's budget has gotten balanced, and we've been trying to be cognizant of the state's situation by really limiting our operating budget requests. There's one exception that we'll go over. And to try and persuade the state that there are sometimes going to be creative ways to save dollars, find efficiencies. There were a couple of those bills during the session that we helped with, that I think are good news on that front. In the area of transportation, ever since I've been working with all of you, that's been obviously one of our key priorities. And we were joking at the beginning of this, it's a disappointment, obviously, that we didn't get to a final destination to home plate on a transportation investment package. One of the things that's disappointing to me is that you all, your story had been heard, you were well-positioned in any revenue package that anybody had on the table. The needs at 405 and 167, the additional lane capacity between Renton and Bellevue, local options that could help, direct distribution money for you, it was somewhere on the order of, you know, once it got ramped up, a quarter million dollars a year that you could have used. All of those things were, none of those things were in question in the package, and all of them would have been very helpful to this city. And we're now probably put off to 2014 for a transportation package, perhaps late 2013, and we can talk about that. But I think we'll get there, it's just the delay is disappointing. That said, the legislature does have to pass a biennial transportation budget, it's one of the three they do. And we've highlighted here some very good things for this city within that budget. One is that the legislature goes ahead and appropriates most of the remaining money of 40 million they set aside for pre-construction work at the interchange, so that when a new package is adopted and money flows to that 405-167 connector, there won't be a lot of delay. It'll be in a ready-to-construct mode. Additionally, we had learned about some of the 405 corridor money that was saved from elsewhere in the corridor. There were at least some signals given to us that it was going somewhere other than the 405 corridor, and that didn't please the House Transportation Chair too much. And you're all very fortunate that the House Transportation Chair, Judy Clyburn, has Renton in her legislative district. So I'd say between Chair Clyburn and also Senator Litzow in the Senate Transportation Committee, you know, we had good coverage, both chambers, for a proviso that said, "Wait a minute, timeout. If you get savings in the 405 corridor, they shall stay in the corridor." And those two members, frankly, went a little bit further. They said, "Wherever you have savings up and down this 30-mile corridor, we want them put into 405-167, and we want them put into the Renton to Bellevue segment." So that doesn't take the place of funding to do those projects, but it's a very helpful signal from the legislature that where they do get efficiencies along the corridor and save money, they want to put it into the problem spots like this one.
If I may add to this one, this was, you know, sharp eyes of Doug, because he started seeing some of these monies being shifted. This was early in the game, and, you know, we were able to get on top of it fast. And as he mentioned, the Transportation Chair was very favorable towards Renton, but another kudos to Doug on catching this early.
Then in the, in what's called the Regional Mobility Program, we've listed for you that there's just shy of a 1.29 million that allows us to go forward with the Rapid Line F-work with Metro that extends that service to Boeing. You know, there's both operating and capital pieces here, we still have more work to do, but this is helpful. Frankly, just in the last week or so, we've listed here that we learned from the Freight Mobility Board that $2.5 million that was earlier obtained in the 2011-13 budget was in danger of going by the wayside as of June 30th. I want to really salute the work of Jay, Greg Zimmerman, Doug Jacobson. We got on the phone with Karen Schmidt from the Freight Mobility Board. We found a way to work it so that the 2.5 million is maintained. It's something that you all had to have to keep moving ahead with the Strander project. And I also want to tell you that Karen Schmidt at the Freight Mobility Board, I think, has a real soft spot in her heart for Renton. She's been helpful to you all on more than one occasion.
Yes.
You know, we plan to do a little bit of ahead-of-the-curve thanks to Karen for her outstanding efforts on helping us with the 2.5. And then the 167 hot lanes, there had been a piece of legislation to make those not just a pilot, but something that would be permanent in statute. That actually didn't happen, but what the legislature did is they continued that program for two more years under the budget. So there's still going to be a need for 167 hot lanes to become more permanent. I think the good news is there's a bipartisan support for doing that, because if there's going to be any kind of hot lane treatment on 405, and we connect it to 167, it only makes sense to have those two treated similarly. And we already talked about the transportation revenue package. I think for you all as a city, probably the one disappointment I'd point to, along with some very good things happening. In the agenda for 2013 this year, one of the things we did under working with Preeti and Jay and the mayor is we proposed to you to consolidate aerospace and economic development and infrastructure into one topic. And so obviously, there continued to be an emphasis on the work around the 737 and 737 MAX, and making sure there were policies and bills that supported aerospace, but also just overall job retention, job creation, infrastructure funding. We housed those all under one category. And one of our big asks was a $10 million ask that we were probably in second chair on. The Aerospace Futures Alliance was the lead requester for that project. And while we didn't get $10 million for what we call the CSAT, we did get $5 million, which is one of the larger line items in the state's capital budget. And we do think we have a lot of support from leadership in the House and Senate to perhaps try and plug in $5 million more in the supplemental budget. We've already talked a little bit, we think there might be interest by the House Speaker in coming to Renton, maybe touring the site, seeing what this is all about. So more follow-up to do there.
Doug?
Yes?
That $5 million is, in addition to the original 2.5 million, so there's a total of 7.5 million that will be spent on the training session?
Yes, that's correct, Councilmember Person. Good question. Yeah, we keep the 2.5, we add the 5 to that. And ultimately, our design is for a $12.5 million, three-bay facility, which would really do a bang-up job of bringing not only aerospace, but K through 12 and STEM and community college needs into one facility. So we still hope to get there.
Okay.
A number of bills passed that were favorable to aerospace, I've listed one here. The Joint Center for Technology Innovation is a cooperative effort between the University of Washington and Washington State, and they have something on the order of 18 different projects that they are working on to help with, you know, the next stage of innovation that we need to see in aerospace. Also on the economic development side, Preeti mentioned, I think you walk in some rarefied air in this community where you have such a regular relationship with your chamber, your hospital, your school district. And in-Gro Substitute House Bill 1253, to me, is one of those Exhibit A illustrations of that. The legislature passed a lodging tax bill that enables, frankly, you all in the chamber to keep doing what you've been doing very successfully in this community. And I would say it's one where you sort of had me as quasi-staff to the chamber, because it was really a critical thing for them and the way they fund the visitor's center, for that bill to go through. It did. The chamber came down and testified multiple times in the legislature. So it was a very good cooperative effort, not just within our community, but with cities and counties and a number of chambers all over the state. Frankly, over some pretty vocal opposition of the lodging industry, not with the way the lodging tax was worked in this community, but in some communities where they felt using the lodging tax for operating purposes was not money well-spent. And so we had a real robust debate before we got to a bill that we think works well for us.
And again, if I may add, in, from our perspective, we actually had one of our hoteliers go and testify for this, which was kind of in direct contrast to the Washington Lodging Association. So, you know, that really worked in the favor of this bill.
Another thing in the capital budget that we wanted to highlight for you all, it's a very good thing, is there's a new commitment, there's actually a policy bill that forwards this as well, but a new commitment to stormwater grant funding. We know under what's called the NPDS permit system, you all are incurring new costs for not only complying with stormwater management, education requirements you have to do, you know, what happens when land is redeveloped, there are requirements that go with all of those things, and they're expensive. And this was really the first time the legislature had a committed program in the capital budget and a companion policy bill. It was Senate Bill 5296, that says, "We're going to make stormwater a high priority usage of our, what are called our MACHA funds, Model Toxic Control Act funds." So of that $100 million, 81 of it is going to go out under competitive grants. I think you'll be a community that's well-positioned to compete for those. One downer, I think, within the capital budget process, you know, for cities globally, there were two areas where the legislature diverted some money in the final hours of the budget process. One on liquor revenues, we'll get to in a moment, but also the Public Works Assistance Account, which has been in place for over three decades and provides low-interest loan money for infrastructure. All but the money for existing pre-approved projects was diverted to the operating budget. It's one of the compromises when the Senate and the House fought over, "Do we do new revenues? Do we close tax loopholes?" This was one of the results. They ended up transferring a lot of money out of the capital budget, and a significant amount, about $277 million, came out of the trust fund. The positive news, if there is some for you all, is you weren't, you weren't a listed recipient. I think under your policies as a council, you're trying to do more, pay-as-you-go, you're trying not to rely as much on loans as you might have in the past. So it's one of those bad news, good news things. You're not one of those that was on the chopping block, but still disappointing to see the Assistance Account diverted that way. On the fiscal stability front, obviously, we've tried to educate our legislators on the fact that it's not just the state budget that has been hurting in this recessionary time, but we've made a lot of significant cutbacks. We very consistently, under the mayor and this council, lay that out for our members, and I think they appreciate the detail we give them. So it's our way of saying that where you do have revenues that flow down from state to local, those are really important to us, and we need them to be retained. So we had a number of goals here under fiscal stability, and on many of them, we did just fine. The state shared revenues, whether it's annexation sales tax credit program, criminal justice, streamlined sales tax mitigation, which you don't get much of anymore, those things were protected. Some criminal justice money in the areas of auto theft and sex offender address verification were protected. Little more of a mixed story with liquor revenues. Without getting into too much minutia, remember, there's a couple of slices to how liquor revenues come from the state down to the local level. Some is through an excise tax that gets distributed down to the local level, and some of it is through what used to be known as the profits. Now that we have more of a privatized system, that's really all the non-excise tax stuff. That's the licenses, for example. And so a lot of that was protected, but the liquor excise tax distribution was reduced by 50%. Now, there's two ways of looking at that. In 2012, 100% of it was swept into the state's general fund. So you could say, "Hey, we only got a 50% hit." That's one way of looking at it. You could say, "Geez, you're supposed to lay off the gloves entirely, and you only laid off 50% of it." So that ends up being, for you all, on a, on a biennial basis, about a $470,000 hit. Now, there's an offset, we'll talk about in a moment, that I think still makes it a plus for you.
Doug, on that, there's two things on that chart. First of all, the liquor tax, I think it's important that the public know that the cities and the counties take all the enforcement hit and all the problems from liquor sales. And the whole idea of this originally, when the law was originally passed way back when, was to give the cities and counties help in taking care of that. I mean, the state causes the problem. They sell the alcohol, and then any enforcement or any problems associated that are in cities. So they really aren't doing, I mean, it's great that we got $400,000, but it should have been a lot more. And it just, you know, bugs me that they continue to take this money away, and then they put it in their general fund, and give us no help, help at all, so. And could you go back, there's another question I had on the other...
And while we're going back, Councilmember Person, I think we certainly agree, and one of the things we did during the session was we made that point precisely, that there's more law enforcement obligations than ever at the local level with the privatized system, and four times as many stores on the ground. And the chief went down and testified in front of the legislature, and in fact, charted out some of the spikes that we are seeing in incidents as a result of the privatized system. So your point is well-taken.
And I think the other thing, when we talk about criminal justice assistance, every time there's a citation of any kind written in the state of Washington, especially traffic citations, that money goes to, the majority of that money goes to state. Everything, the city's collecting a lot of money. And it started out originally to fund the basic law enforcement academies, you know, to train the police officers and to train prosecutors, and that, and now they've taken some of that money, so we have to pay, it's 25% of the cost of sending an officer. The state mandates they go to that school. I mean, we can't say, "Well, we want to train them ourselves." They gotta go to that school. We collect all the funds, again, the cities and the counties collect all these funds and give them to the state, and now the state has taken them away to use for their general fund. And it just, it just, you know, bugs me that it's cost, because it's expensive to send these police officers to these schools. Very, they should go. I'm not trying to, that's not my issue. My issue is that the cities and the counties are collecting the money and taking all the problems, and the state just keeps taking the money, and they, they actually keep adding everybody's, "Oh, this is a good thing to do, let's do that, we'll just tack it on to the traffic citation." So anyway, that's just my narrative on that, and...
And Councilmember Person, I think point well-taken there as well. I might note that there's really two pieces here that we're talking about. I think you're referencing the traffic fines that are collected all over the state by local law enforcement. A lot of that does then go to the state level, and we would argue, as you just did much more articulately than I could, that more of that needs to come back, and it should fully fund things like the law enforcement academy. The criminal justice assistance is a separate pot of money that's a general fund distribution from the treasurer's office, but I think your point's very well-taken.
Mr. President?
Oh, yes.
So good to see you in one place, Doug. Every time I saw you, you were running up and down the hallways. I want to go back to liquor real quick and ask you to do a little forecasting, and you may be doing this later on in the presentation. So we don't have another operating budget for another two years. Is there a chance in future sessions that we can get 75% back? Is this going to be an incremental thing? Or are we gonna ask for the other 50% next session? What do you think is gonna happen with cities and the liquor revenue?
Well, certainly, this will be part of your deliberations and your colleagues and other local governments. I think one of my recommendations would be that we, we have an obligation to continue to ask for some of that to be restored. One of the things that didn't get done in the 2013 session is we have a, we have a freeze from 2012 on our percentage growth in what are known as the liquor profits. So that's another one of those limiting factors we think needs to be removed. Clearly, the 50% reduction, we think, needs to go away. So I would contend, and obviously, it becomes a, you know, it's ultimately your document, but I would contend that we'll want to have something within the priorities that says, "This is not right to keep siphoning off the liquor money that is critical to law enforcement at the local level."
And if I may add, Councilmember Prince, you were there when we took the data that showed the increase in liquor thefts in Renton, and we had some really very compelling data.
Absolutely.
And all our legislators were very impressed with that. So it's not that we don't have a case to make for getting these monies to help us with our, you know, law enforcement needs. So I would, you know, suggest, as Doug did, that we keep on this.
Okay. Thank you.
Frankly, one of the saving graces for us, for other jurisdictions, was the legislature's passage of In-Gro Second Substitute House Bill 1971. And that's what was, the shorthand for that was the telecommunications parity law. And what that really means is that a, a lot of years of exemption from sales and excise tax for landline telephones went away. Those in the cellular side of the telecom industry had said, "Gosh, why are we tacking on those taxes and the landline providers don't have to?" That was fixed. Additionally, you know, what we're seeing increasingly, the prepaid wireless cards, those had been basically a tax-free haven, that exemption was fixed. And so we've listed here, we got the figure from the Department of Revenue, that one year's worth of that is around $256,000. So I think you're fortunate in that the passage of House Bill 1971 should more than offset the 50% liquor hit that we just talked about. And the other big thing that this House Bill 1971 does is it, it likely puts to bed... And the other big thing that this House Bill 1971 does is it likely puts to bed some prior-year litigation involving the likes of Sprint and Verizon, who were saying that they were getting an equal treatment, unequal, unequal, I guess it would be, that the landline providers were getting a tax-free climate to their taxed climate. So likely, the state and local governments have protected themselves against any back tax liability through 1971 as well. That was frankly, one of the two bills that, in the very testy negotiations back and forth between a Democratic-controlled House and a majority coalition senate, that was one of the two bills that I guess you could label tax bills that were accepted in the final deal, the other one dealing with a state tax. Quickly, we had wanted, as many others did, to get some kind of relief on public records, not the vast majority that we all think make perfect sense for the public to have, but some of those that maybe fit under more of a harassment, records abuse category. The legislature did not do a bill in that area. They did, however, fund a Ruckles House Center study, which is supposed to lead to some recommendations at the end of this year on how to deal with public records. An indigent defense, we had on our agenda, that a state Supreme Court rule on caseload limits was going to result in some new costs. The indigent defense caseload change has been moved back to January 2015. So I'd say this is another one of those issues we're still going to have to bring to the legislature, but we've been given a little more time to think through it. Public safety, again, as long as I've been working with you all, has been something you've wanted on your agenda. One of the main things we worked for in 2013, along with some of the budget items we talked about, was with gangs intervention and prevention strategies. And the legislature in 2012 did start a new grant program designed to reward agencies that team up with nonprofits for gangs intervention. And they continued that for 2013, 15. So what had been a $250,000 one-time effort now is a $500,000 biennial grant program. I want to particularly call out Representative Eric Pettigrew, he was relentless on this one. And I should say, your legislators, we could, on all of these issues, name members that just absolutely went to bat for you. The Training Center, we forgot to talk about people like Marcy Maxwell and Senator Litzo and Senator Hasegawa and Senator Kaiser, they were all terrific in helping you out. And I would add that on the gangs piece, the work that you are already doing in Renton with other South County agencies and the Alive and Free Program, I think puts you in very good position to compete for that grant funding. Not a guarantee, but I think you're quite well positioned. We also had added to the 2013 agenda, a Quality of Life platform, because it's something that you do a lot with in this city on the local level. And at the state level, where we played that out was through a request for a replacement for the old wooden pedestrian bridge at Riverview Park that's had quite a bit of flood damage and where you all have used your own local dollars to make fixes on several occasions. And this was a request to say, "Gosh, the wooden stuff probably isn't going to work forevermore and how about a galvanized steel replacement?" And we asked for $1 million, the governor and ultimately the legislature came back with 1.1 million, so you got a little bonus there, but a very good outcome. One of your newest members, Representative Steve Burquist, who's a Renton resident, worked very hard on that, as did Senators Hasegawa and Litzo. So really nice to have that one come out of the final capital budget, which by the way, was in doubt all the way up until the final weekend of the second special session.
We threatened to send Leslie Betlock back down.
Yeah, I think Preeti used the word relentless in terms of some of the staff help. I just, I'll never forget the day Leslie spent down there with our legislators and she was, boy, she was pounding on them. She did her work very well.
Go, girl.
Senator Litzo couldn't believe that she was actually Leslie from Parks and Recreation, referring to the NBC TV show. Yeah.
And so lastly, some other things of note, obviously, whenever you build a legislative agenda, you establish your priorities, but I've never met a session where there aren't going to be other things that you learn have some significant impacts where you want to jump in and help. And we did that on a few things. I referenced, you know, on your basic premises, the cost relief, cost savings. Senate Bill 5099 will help with that. There's a rulemaking that public agency fleets are supposed to go all to alternative fuels by 2018. This bill backs that out for some of the more expensive vehicles like fire and police. Senate Bill 5912 was a product of the second special session on DUI, especially with a couple of the tragic incidents we had in the Puget Sound. The legislature had some new mandatory arrest provisions, they put in what they call 24/7 monitoring ignition interlock requirements are going to be added to state law. At one point, the legislature was looking at making the fourth DUI offense a felony. It's currently the fifth one. Mandating that fourth offense is a felony could have meant a lot of new costs for local governments. The legislature didn't have the money to do that. To its credit, they backed off that legislation a little bit. House Bill 1552 was one we supported, trying to crack down a little more on the metal theft that we continue to see occur particularly throughout this region. Senate Bill 5053 was one we supported, where we see some of the serial vehicle prowling in areas like malls and park and rides. What this bill will do is begin to put tougher offenses on those multiple offenders, similar to the success we had on auto theft from several years ago, where we've seen a real downturn there. So we're trying to apply the same principle to those who steal the contents of a vehicle. We were also very supportive of House Bill 1512, which is a clarification, but an important one, that says basically, fire hydrants and other fire suppression utilities can be paid for out of your utility funds. It corrects a state Supreme Court decision from a few years ago. Of course, when we go to the legislature, we never say that the state Supreme Court needs to be corrected. We always say, "We're just clarifying the state Supreme Court decisions." That's what we did. On the next page, House Bill 1652 was one we spent a lot of time on. And I want to thank Jay, and I think you all should also, next time you see the governor's chief of staff, who happens to have spent some time as the Renton School Superintendent, you might want to thank her too. But we didn't have a problem with the underlying premise of House Bill 1652, which is the idea of having a delayed payment of impact fees. What we did have a problem with was the parts of the bill that said, "The delay in the payment will be spread across everyone." And you all had gone through a process, of course, where you exempted the schools from that for obvious reasons, because of the, you know, the early construction needs they have when people move into an area. So 1652 was a bit heavy-handed, we thought. We teamed up with schools, we teamed up with other cities, the AWC, Parks and Recreation, a real coalition to work with the governor on a veto of that bill. I think that issue will be back again. Another issue that we know will be back again is this House Bill 1016, where some special districts wanted an essential public facilities designation under the law that we, as our own utility providers, don't have and we don't think it's necessary. And so that bill went by the wayside. We were supportive of the legislature and the state getting back into the role of supporting tourism. Only $1 million in the 1315 budget, but that's a million more than they did in the last couple of budgets. So at least we can say the state is back in the business of somewhat recognizing the value of tourism in this state. And House Bill 1466, you have been a prior user of this alternative public works contracting statute that allows you to do things like design, build, or general contract or construction management at your own discretion. And so that statute was extended by eight years. So what's left on the cutting room floor and what needs to be pushed in the months and years ahead? We've already talked about a couple of them. I think you all asked very good questions about liquor revenues and I think unfortunately, the growing inclination of the state to move some of those public safety revenues away from the local level and toward their general fund, that's going to have to be an area where we push transportation funding. We don't have a static system. This isn't like a park where you replace some infrastructure and it lasts 25 years and you don't have to think about it. The transportation system is a system and it's dynamic and we use it a lot and we have growth and areas break down, they get congested, they need to be fixed, bridges over the Skagit River fall, those things happen and it takes billions of dollars to update a system and we haven't done that for many years. So that issue clearly is not going away. And frankly, Preeti mentioned the issue with the majority coalition, but I think probably the other 800-pound gorilla issue that's not going away is the McCleary case on K-12 education was decided by the court and the court had said to the legislature, "We expect by 2018 about a $4.5 billion to $5 billion ramp up in how much you spend on K-12." After a lot of arguing and a lot of debate, this legislature is spending an additional $1 billion and patting itself on the back, but just on the way down here, I heard a radio ad from an education group saying, "Well, great, not enough, not good enough, doesn't replace our class size issues, et cetera." So the McCleary case and the debate over how much additional money to put into education is going to be with us for several years to come and it's going to continue to put pressure on other parts of the state general fund. And clearly, we are going to have the same debate we saw in 2013, where some legislators are going to say, "Okay, there's no way we can squeeze more out of the general fund or we can't keep transferring money on a one-time basis to make it all fit. We've got to close some of these tax loopholes, et cetera." And you're going to have other legislators say, "Nope, that's not fair to small business, it's not fair to business in general, it's not fair to the public that pays plenty in taxes already." Those are just fundamental philosophical debates that I don't think are going to go away. And so for things like liquor and things like the Public Works Assistance Account, we've got our work cut out for us to tell the story of why those things are important and shouldn't continue to get stripped away and diverted. And we talked about public records is going to have to be brought back. And then frankly, there's issues we may not readily know about or recognize today that in September could hit us in the back of the head. So, you know, we'll have our own process to go through and talk to the departments and talk to all of you about what we should be placing on the docket for 2014. So that's probably more speechifying than you ever wanted, but we really appreciate you letting us go through all of this and hopefully, Preeti and I can take any other questions you have and try and answer them.
I got a couple.
Yeah, please, Don, go ahead.
Well, first of all, and I know we're very early into the new marijuana law, but all this taxation that was the state is supposedly going to get out of this, again, goes all to the state and to the general fund or wherever, and nothing to the local jurisdictions who have the problem. So just to me, as we go forward, that's something that we should be hammering on them a little bit too. I mean, first of all, I don't think they're going to get the tax dollars that they think. And secondly, they're spending so much money trying to get this thing going with no tax dollars, they're going to be in a hole before they start. But if it does really come through, we need to get a, have some assistance with that. Then the other one is just kind of a general comment of where you think the legislature, the power structure will be after elections, because there's, I think there's several people around the state that are up for election or open seats type thing and what effect that would have when they come back.
So I'll take your last question first, Councilmember Person. I think, keep an eye on the 26th legislative district. That's where an appointed senator, Senator Nathan Schlicker, who replaced Derek Kilmer after Senator Kilmer went to Congress, runs against an established House member, Representative Jan Angel, former county commissioner. There will be a lot of money spent on that race that will have a lot to do with the complexion of the state senate. And then I would make a prediction to you all that we'll see record amounts of money spent on the 2014 senate and house races. Senator Rodney Tom was one of the two crossover Democratic senators to form the majority coalition. I would be astonished if we didn't see multiple opponents running against Senator Tom. That'll be a huge battleground race right near us, not a district that serves us, but pretty darn close. So I think we'll see a lot of battles for the hearts and minds of the public and a lot of testing out of whose philosophy is going to stick in the next several months. And duly noted on the marijuana tax issue, it was raised. I think you're right, I think that's one of those things local governments are going to have to press the case for.
In fact, on that, one of the things that we hope to do is, you know, talk to the department heads and come and also discuss with you as we firm and form our legislative priorities for 2014, so that things like this, we keep front and center and add to our priority list, because this was not an issue two years ago, but it's definitely something for us to contend with now.
Absolutely.
Thank you, very good job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Wonderful.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Very polished presentation, conditioned that timeframe.
I think, Mr. President, if I could, just to say one more time again, how much we've appreciated working with Doug over the years and particularly this session, as Preeti said, tough session, lots of twists and turns and particularly down towards the end. I think Doug's ability to be on the ground, the credibility he has with our delegation as well as with other legislators down there, proved his worth multiple times when we just needed to have somebody there who could make a quick contact and folks would know that what Doug was telling them was accurate and consistent. And so I think not only to avoid a whole lot of bad things that could have happened, but despite of all the difficult times financially, to come out of this with money to help with that bridge and other things, really attests, I think, to his ability down there to get the job done for us. So we really do appreciate that.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much.
Despite the 2:00 AM emails that we were getting on a regular basis.
It's all big ruse, we just turn it off.
Fantastic. Okay, well, that was the only item we had tonight, right? So with that, committee of the whole is adjourned. Thank you very much.